We'll do a roll call. I'm here, Rebecca. Phil?
Here.
Zach?
Here.
Have you heard from Mike Ahern?
Mike wrote and had something come up and he could not attend tonight, so.
So no Mike tonight. John?
Six o'clock.
Present.
Mark?
Here.
Mike Bouchard.
Present.
No Peter tonight. No Steve. Susan?
Here.
Okay. So without Mike and without with a vacancy on the for full members, Susan and Mike go ahead and join us as full voting members this evening. All right, we will next go on to a review of the minutes from February 17th. Any comments or edits on the minutes? Perhaps a motion to approve the minutes from February 17th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 17th.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I didn't think so, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from February 17th, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Abstentions?
Ms. Joseph?
Thank you.
Any public comments unrelated to tonight's agenda? Have we received any communications? In the past couple of weeks? Committee reports.
Zach, you want to hit first?
I would, but I missed the select board meeting this week, so I have no update.
I was there for part of it.
So can you give me an update on the meeting? I should have been there.
I only I only was there for the discussion of the South Main Street project. So and just so the board knows that I did bring up since something we had discussed, gosh, I'm not even sure if anyone here was present for these discussions, but when the Panther Pub did their extent, their bump out into the towards the street, a tree had to come down. It was a tree that needed to come down anyway, but my question was just how can we just wanted to continue the discussion about making sure we have nice tree streets and a lot of trees come out on South Main and more and more treeless. But knowing that the project is does not include streetscaping.
By chance, does it include burying of telephone wires? Or power? No?
No.
No? Just curious. It's kind of.
It would be nice.
It's pretty ugly down there.
It is.
It's helpful to trees as well if they wouldn't be.
It's true.
But the discussion was really about what the project's going to look like and timetables and things like that, so I don't have much more to.
The slides that the engineer presented are on the town's website. Andrew put those up today, as well as the preliminary plans for the project. Some people have had a hard time looking at the PDF. There's a lot of details on the plan, so there's also a full-size copy downstairs in my office.
Can you give us the gist? I'm not familiar with it, so I'm just curious.
So this is, yeah, sure, it's calling it the downtown drainage project. It's really picking up water starting at Russell Street and piping it replacing the drainage system from about Pleasant Street, Russell Street, south to Warren, installing drainage on Warren Street, underground pipes and catch basins where there isn't any, and then on Main Street adding in tearing up the street, adding in all-new drainage on what we call South Main Street, so from Highland down to Warren. All right? So that all has all that water's now going to be captured from Russell, Warren, and Main Street and kind of go south for the most part. There's still, I think, a piece that comes towards Highland, but in general. So there's also work on trying to design a detention pond down by the skate park somewhere in there. There's still that's still in some changes are being made to that. And concurrently, that's the town's project. It's a stormwater drainage project.
Reporting in progress.
Concurrently with that, there's a water sewer project on Main Street, and their project covers that overlaps on Main Street and also goes much further north on Main Street, and I don't know exactly where it goes. And theirs is a multi-year project, too. So we're looking at a construction timeline of the construction timeline is starting July, but we have to start by beginning of July, really, early July, and should be 2022, 2023 for the Russell Main Street, and then the water sewer maybe continue. I'm not sure with their timeline. It might go longer on another segment further north. So what we have funding from for rough, it was originally 80%, but some of the costs have gone up, so the town's paying a little bit more than their 20, the original 20%, but I think we're up over around a $3 million. It was over 3 million, 3.3 was what original budget was, and maybe 3.4 now, million-dollar project. We get 2.7 from EDA, but with federal money, there's lots and lots of things we have to do. Our engineering firm is HEB Engineers. They've been excellent working things through. It's been kind of fast-paced since this fall. So we've been trying to also, you know, we did not talk at the, they don't know yet about traffic flows and, you know, night work, and some of that is still being worked out. The goal is to keep one lane open on Main Street at all times, but there may be temporary shutdowns for, you know, while they're for 20 minutes or something. I don't know.
One other quick question. You said they're doing tear up the street. Are they going to redo the sidewalks in that area?
Yep, so everything that's going to be torn up. So it's what's hard is that we have really two projects working in the same place, and that's like another long story about bringing those two pieces together, which has been difficult. The goal is to have the road torn up once, and then water and sewer work will be done, and then this town storm drain and the road will be put back. And yes, new sidewalks on five-foot sidewalks, I believe it is, on either side. So the whole project was really put together as a drainage project and not a streetscaping project, unfortunately. If we added in those costs for, you know, we could have probably added in sort of as an economic development piece back when the application was written, but that didn't happen, and it also would have significantly added to the cost, and the town only has so much ability to pay for the required minimum of 20%. So that's my understanding about, you know, from a couple of years ago when this was all starting to be discussed about needing to get the drainage work done and then see where we end up, so.
I think once the project's going to get, once it's put back together, though, they said, I mean, there's some improvements that we will see on that street, and that's that they're trying to maintain a more consistent road width and putting in granite curbing where in a lot of places there's still just asphalt curbing.
And just new sidewalk, you know, new roadway and better drainage will be a good start at least. And Russell Street, there'll be some changes, new sidewalks also. On the west side of Russell Street, there's actually in some places like a grassy, there's like the road and a grassy strip, and then the sidewalk, and it's narrow, so they're going to have a full five-five-foot sidewalk, but it'll be road, curb, and sidewalk, and then the grass. So makes it easier to maintain, just contains it better, that kind of thing, so. And I think in places, and Russell Street also is either very wide in places or varies in widths. I don't, I can't remember the, I don't have all my notes in front of me, but it'll be a consistent 20, I think, 28 or 24, 28, 26, 28-foot lane on two travel, you know, whatever they require to travel, two travel lanes. So it's going to, I think Russell Street will end up feeling a bit narrower, but it, you know, just the way it aligns, and it actually might slow traffic down.
That's not a bad thing, actually, yeah.
Yeah. And the bottom of Winter Street is will as a result will needs to also be realigned and much safer, you know how it's that big open area with that telephone pole, utility pole in the middle? Hopefully, to keep that pole, not have to move it because that's extra cost, so Winter Street will have some different alignments and come in and actually have a stop sign onto Russell and then a short segment to cut over to Warren, so.
Which will add a little green space, too, right?
Yeah, and there's a little town park there, picnic bench that adds a little green space there, so.
So now, even though I've, you know, lived in this neighborhood for years, I still get there, I'm like, how am I supposed to do with this intersection?
Besides hit the utility pole.
Yeah. Do I have to go to the right of the pole or left of the pole?
So as a result of the curbing and the drainage, it meant kind of a chance to just make that intersection different, you know, because they needed to put in curbing to get the water to go where it needs to go. Everything's working so far.
Yeah.
But I also did not bring my charger up, and I only have so much battery power, so about an hour and a half, so we got to.
All right, we better move on. All right, so select board's been covered. Thank you, Zach. And any conservation commission updates?
Zero.
Any other committees represented here?
I can remind everybody that the school board budget meeting is next Monday, 7:00, if you want to vote on the school board, on the school budget.
New business. Shall we dig into the capital improvement program? Oh, look, we already covered 7A, second 7A.
Oh, you're right. Oops.
That's all right. We already did it anyway, so.
7A.
Yep, we'll start with 7A.
7A, A1. So Rebecca had asked me to actually just decided, I think I gave you the handouts. I made a couple changes to these. These slides, sorry. Getting a message that low system resources may affect my audio quality, but you guys can hear me. So the, I put together some slides for the last meeting. We never got through them. I think I gave them to you, but let's just Rebecca said we should just run through them just to kind of, so I've maybe shuffled a couple of them around. So these first couple of slides, it starts with what looks like number 19, was actually I just copied two slides from the Office of Strategic Initiatives, a presentation about planning board and roles and responsibilities, and they had a couple of slides about CIP, Capital Improvements Program. So given that's the official sort of state source, I thought those would be good slides. So just what is a capital improvements program? It's really geared towards being a budgeting, planning tool for municipalities to help with finance and purchase of expenses over an extended period of time. The first step really on it is getting authorization to do it through the legislative body, which is town meeting, and kind of talk about this a little bit about who's responsible for doing it and then proceeding with it and maintaining it and amending it. They also, really the goals behind it is to prioritize and plan for any major expenses, and ultimately, this should come from the master plan. So I did go back and look at our master plan, and actually, one of the implementation items was to work on a CIP, so we have some guidance on that, I guess. But also, the master plan should be guiding future development areas that might need capital improvements, that kind of thing. So I think there'd be some aspects in the master plan to go through, and ideally, it creates cooperation and understanding between everybody in town. One way, all words.
That's the goal.
Yeah. Really, we, Joseph actually looked up some of the things in the statutes and had this, made a couple of slides here. So really, in the statutes, it talks about the CIP, capital improvement projects, and the program shall kind of document what those projects are. They rec, they say over a period of at least six years, so it's that financing aspect is supposed to go six-plus years out, and then try to get a sense of urgency and need for projects, and then a timetable based on what, you know, that that time period and urgency kind of come together to figure out what comes first, what comes second, how do you balance all the needs at once? And again, kind of thinking through what the master plan, what we can do following regulations that kind of, so that's sort of the tie to the planning board side of it. Generally, the master plan or capital improvement program would have cost estimates for each projects, in some cases, operating maintenance expenses that may periodically be needed depending on if they are big enough, and then look at funding sources, revenue sources, any other grant funding or possible outside external sources, just, you know, think of how are we going to pay for all of this? So again, kind of thinking, what is a capital improvement in general? It's something that's high-cost and long-lasting, so it should be lasting a period of a number of years. It's not usually operation and maintenance, although that can be worked in for operation maintenance of capital items, like I just said. So a couple of examples might be the, you know, a couple of things I had there, wastewater treatment plants, you know, fire trucks, repairs to town hall, a new roof for generators, that kind of thing, or a new, a new building for the town, anything that, you know, roads, bridges, you know, lots of different vehicles and equipment that we certainly have. This is actually something I put together some couple of years ago, just as a real rough estimate, actually, for some students of, because most people don't know what things cost. So I'd actually gone through a few town budgets at the time. This was, so again, very much rounded off estimates of where things are, you know. It's always amazing how much the fire trucks and ladder trucks and ambulances and these, you know, you know, it adds up fast. These are big things. And then I just put in the red there because we just talked about it, the last one, you know, just basically two roads, you know, or segment of Main Street and Russell Street were $3.4 million for just the drainage and road repair part. So that's not even the water and sewer, you know, so. So how does it all kind of come together? Using these kinds of items and a real simplified version that fits on a slide, if you take those kinds of numbers, you can say, hey, okay, we estimate these items cost in that, you know, we know what they may cost, and maybe when you think out like, well, when do we need to replace them? So if you need a new fire truck by 2026 and you start planning for that today, the idea might be that you save a certain amount of money over five years to sort of stabilize that cost. You know, if the bridge is three years out, then you need more money for that to get to the 600,000 in that in that regard. So that's where that kind of sense of urgency and balancing the needs of all the programs and departments and all the needs of the town come together to try to figure out at the bottom line is really the goal, trying to keep the total per year consistent or more, you know, or without large fluctuations, because that's what can really impact the tax, tax base. If you're trying to buy everything in one year, then obviously, you're going to have a big bump or needing to bond for it or whatever. So it's a, it's a fiscal planning tool as much as anything. So again, that's a real simplified sort of version. We've done some work kind of looking, and I sent you some links to some other towns. I know this is, you can't really read this, but, you know, this is town of Exeter had a very detailed capital improvement plan. We've also, town of Bo was another one that was similar kind of format. Joseph actually wrote to one of the towns and going to get some of their sheets and templates they were willing to share, which might be a good starting point, at least to have it in the, not just a PDF format. We can tweak it maybe, it might be a, you know, share some information. But in general, that they're doing, I like the fact they had sort of a photograph to document maybe why this is needed, a description that a department head would write up about in the main text there. So you, you know, you're collecting this information from each department to try to sort out what it is, you know, description of it and what the total cost, how you might sort of put it together in the timeline. And just another example that, you know, so that this would be the kind of information that to collect, and there's lots of different formats and forms, and we would make our own and adjust this kind of style of it for our needs. And then again, it gets all put into a spreadsheet, and again, you can't really read this. When you start looking at these in communities, they're, you know, these spreadsheets are pages and pages. Mine slide was very simple with just a couple of items on it. So I think the real, besides this overview of what it is and what it can do, it's like, how are we going to do this, right? So somewhere in an old, old document about CIPs, they listed out very carefully a bunch of steps. So the first is to verify the authority, get organized, committee and a schedule. You know, each town may define a capital project and equipment differently. One community might say over $5,000, another over $10,000, who knows? You know, that kind of, and you may have different thresholds for different types of projects or equipment, so kind of giving, giving some definition of what what that is. Then it kind of early on, you'd try to look at some of the history of what we've done for capital expenditures, some of the history of tax base, tax rate, that kind of thing, how things have changed, and what kind of debt does the town have, because those debt payments also can fit into a CIP program, those annual payments. They suggest reviewing the master plan, you know, do we see in the master plan? This is that planning part, like that the planning board should really take on, understanding, you know, is there something in there that we're recommending extending, you know, more improved drainage somewhere or water and sewer lines extended on Tenny Mountain Highway? Is that a goal that might support different land use and development for the community, for the community to consider? Getting information from the departments, all those kinds of forms, and, you know, for some cases, that could be difficult because there's a lot, some, you know, certain, with lots of vehicles and equipment, that's different than, I was joking, because the Planning and Development Department, you know, we've got, well, we have Scott's car, the code enforcement would be, but that's about it, so we're pretty low-key, you know, just by nature of what we do. We, you know, we don't have lots of big trucks or anything. So then you go through and, you know, you review all the different, all the information and try to figure out that urgency, risk analysis, prioritization, and that's really probably where a big part of the work is and meeting with departments, and it can get competitive and, you know, political at that point, certainly. And then figuring out that time sequence is also a really big challenge. So and then finally, adopting it and getting it to the budget committee, select board, that kind of thing. So really, adopting it and having it be able to be used as a budgeting tool would have to be done by September, October, roughly, I would guess, to be, so it is, you know, we don't have a lot of time. Are we going to capture everything in the first year? No. But do we make this over two years? We'll see, you know. How do we, that schedule part is something to consider, and then, of course, you get to do it again the next year to keep it going. But the rebuilding, it's obviously going to be the really hard part. The good news is, step one is done, so. I dug around in the old town reports.
Interesting.
Yeah. And in 1987, at town meeting, the planning board was authorized to create a capital improvement program, and we did indeed used to have one with planning board members kind of leading the charge on it. I did not take the time to understand when that sort of stopped or certainly understand why, but, you know, there has been some capital reserve accounts created and monies in there, but really, doing a more comprehensive view has sort of been not happening for some time, and so we don't need to understand all the history, but at least we have the authorization. What's interesting in the statute is the legislature, so town meeting can authorize either the planning board to prepare a capital improvement program and to prepare and recommend a CIP, or the town, at town meeting, they authorize the governing body to appoint a CIP committee. So that text from 1987 is pretty clear. It authorizes the planning board to prepare and do that. All right? So that was kind of an interesting thing to understand in this town. So therefore, it's our responsibility or your responsibility, planning boards. But I don't see why the planning board actually can't create a committee to do that, and certainly, you'd want to have, you know, select board or select board slash planning board member on there, budget committee member, you know, can be more than one planning board member. You know, certainly some staff, and at different time, getting input from, well, certainly department heads at different meetings, but maybe more regularly, at least finance director, town manager, perhaps. You know, we're obviously here to help support this. There's some communities will pull in the school board, capital improvement sort of side of it to add that in, so you're really getting a comprehensive picture. So maybe a school board member could, you know, at least be part of it or aware of school staff. And Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, obviously, they've got their own capital improvement thing, so it's, I think it's about taking the schools and the water and sewer and making sure those pieces are understood and building the towns, too. So maybe those two could be like occasional members or consultants or something to it. You know, most committee kind of work like this, I would suggest no more than seven, maybe five to seven members at the most. It's kind of the best number usually to work with. That would be my recommendation. So something to think about. So I think, you know, tonight was partly to kind of think about what is the next step, basically to consider how to make a committee if we take that approach, unless the whole board just wants to do it on your, you know, without the outside help. You know, then trying to think of what is sort of that purpose. We found in one town somewhere had a real charge statement of this is what we're doing, and I think it would be good to have some guiding document of the purpose and, you know, referencing that 1987 vote. And then, you know, starting to look at what's what we already have, some of those steps I outlined before, and thinking how to get that information from departments. So I think that's it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking to myself, how does this interface with current practices? Like, I imagine some of, some of these things are things that currently would be up as a warrant on Tuesday, for example, and some of these things would be just before the planning board in general, I mean, I mean, the select board. I'm just kind of curious how this changes existing procedures for some of those issues.
I mean, all of that, all of the major expenses end up on the warrant in some capacity, whether that's as an individual warrant item or as capital savings or rolled into one of the department line item budgets. So they, they're all on the warrant today.
Yeah.
So whatever plan we put together would have to go from that point forward.
Would that be a warrant issue then, the whole CIP? Or how would that look?
I don't think so, because I think we would use the CIP to inform what we budgeted for and put on the warrant as the proposed budget to vote on.
Yeah.
Got it.
So the CIP would inform the budget process that starts in October.
Okay, so it informs the process, it doesn't actually change the procedures in terms of governance and all that kind of stuff? Okay.
Right. The town manager might choose to say, hey, fire chief, don't bring me a budget proposal that's not in the CIP. So, you know, you could end up in a situation where it informs process, but not in a like dictated way.
Yeah.
Maybe a little bit of sort of cultural change in how things are handled. It's going to, I imagine it's going to be a bit of an adjustment for folks.
And I think one of the, I think when you first set it up, it's going to feel like a budget. But this first bullet here, you know, it's really the idea is to help prioritize and plan for major expenses, you know, that sort of stabilizing. So it's, it's thinking of, well, if we do this year, what we're doing this year means we're not doing certain things, but we can do them in next year or the year after, and we know we're going to have the resources financially to do that because we're, some of the budget every year that's adopted should be putting money in those capital reserves. And the idea, you know, over time, is it should help stabilize things. That's the goal.
And it elevates the conversation instead of relying on individual departments to do that planning within themselves to having a collective plan that everybody's sort of, whether or not they're on board with it, but they're at least all playing from the same sheet.
Yeah, because you get a better sense of what the town needs, not what the Planning and Development Department needs. You know, we want a new car, but, you know, and when you see it against everything else, you might realize like, oh, that's, that's not a priority. I see that this other department needs the car more than we do. We can, with repair and maintenance, we can keep ours going another two years or something.
No, that part I understood. It was just a matter of like, what happens on Tuesday and how would that change? But thank you.
Yeah, it's sort of a.
So would the warrant article read a capital improvement, or would it be each individual? Say there's five items that you're putting money aside for. Would it be one warrant article or be one for each item in that? So you've got a total amount for your capital improvement, say it's a million dollars for easy numbers, but that may consist of some money going towards a fire truck, some money going to infrastructure on the roads, something else. Do you put the total amount or would you break it out for an individual warrant?
I can't answer that, to be honest. I think that's where like the finance director would have to, you know, be whatever the municipal budgeting act requires, whether you can do it in a lump saying, you know, a million dollars for X, Y, and Z in the, in the text, or if you have to break it out, you know, this much.
For example, if you're seeking any external funding, so if it's a, if you've got a grant or any of that kind of thing, it has to be a separate warrant article.
Yeah, that's.
Or if you're going to pay, if you are putting money into savings and then later you're going to expend the money out of savings in order to buy it, again, it has to be on an individual warrant.
That's a warrant article. It's just the breakdown, because, and I think you, you get that total. If you don't break it down, then obviously, it would have to be overall approved because there's people that are going to say, well, I don't think.
I think, I think the only thing that you would do in lump would be like a capital reserve commitment to say that like, you know, we know that this year is a light spending year, and next year, we anticipate a lot of expenses. You know, the, the plan lays out that maybe it's a light year this year, and next year's going to be more expensive, so we're going to put a lot of money into the capital reserve fund this year with the anticipation we might spend some of that over the next several years. But, I mean, when you, when you vote on a warrant, you're voting to say, you know, we vote to authorize the purchase of a new ambulance with. of a new ambulance with, you know, a hundred thousand of funding coming from the capital reserve fund and fifty thousand to be raised from taxes. So the CIP just becomes a tool to forecast when you're going to have those expenses. And it, I mean, I think the town meeting still happens basically the same way where the only thing that you're really voting on is like you might, you might say, you know, we're going to, each thing that you authorize to buy has to identify its source of funding. And it might be taxes, it might be a grant, it might be capital reserve. But then I think you could say, we are going to contribute, you know, three hundred fifty thousand to a capital reserve this year, which is going to level our taxes with what we paid last year. And it will also reduce the amount of taxes we have to charge for next year. So it really just is meant to take, if you do it well, it, it takes a tax rate which goes up and down every year based on your expenses and flattens it out.
Yeah, because you still have your operating, you know, general government kind of, all that stuff.
Right.
You know, so basically, it's a, it's a plan that then you gets, it's a recommendation that goes to the Select Board and Budget Committee.
Budget Committee, right.
And then they will learn, figure out how to take that guidance. Like, if you had something like this table, you know, can we afford, you know, can we do it this way or do we need to keep pushing that fire truck out a couple of years? You know, that may be, they don't have to follow it, but at least it gives a more comprehensive picture.
You could have like another line of horizontal of capital reserve. And it could be positive in some years where you're putting money into the capital reserve. And it might be negative some years where you're taking money out of the capital reserve. And that's how you get that same level of funding at the bottom.
So again, coming, you know, when you think about how many things will go into it, you know, this table will be big.
Right.
If you really wanted to get into it, you could look at those towns that, of the examples that June shared and check out their warrants right now because they're probably easy to find.
I did. I was looking at that. I was looking at some other towns around too.
I liked the recommendation. One of the handout, or one of the resources you provided in the email recommended that once you get all the requests from departments, what I, what I found when we did this previously was that people would kind of put everything, like the Fire Department would say, oh, we want three new fire trucks, we want a new ambulance. Like, you know, it's, I, I think it makes sense for the request to go to the, the Selectment of Finance, head of Finance to say, are these realistic? Like, do we really need these before they get put into the CIP? So like, it might make sense to have, you know, I'm thinking about who, who should be on the CIP committee. Like, I think it should be a Planning Board member, maybe a Selectman Representative, somebody from the Budget Committee, maybe the Finance Director.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
And, and then maybe the Town Manager if she has flexibility.
Or can come periodically, you know, kind of come and go from the committee. But I think a dedicated five group person, you know, five person group.
Right.
Five group.
Yeah.
I think when you start, I mean, this was a high level of information for each item that's, you know, on this slide. But we're having that description and explanation. And you can see that the, the current fire truck is, you know, a 2010 and the life expectancy is 20 years on it or whatever. So you, you kind of get a bigger, more robust sense of what it, what's needed rather than we need a new fire truck. And not to pick on the Fire Department or fire truck.
The other thing that would make sense in my mind is if, if there's a Selectman Representative or the Finance Director, someone to whom the town employees report on this committee, then they can direct town departments to submit these sheets. Because, you know, if you're, if you're dealing with a, a town that has a lot of volunteers, oftentimes you can't, you can't really make people put the work into getting it done. Like, you know, if you have a volunteer Fire Department, you're asking the chief to put some extra time in to come up with this. Whereas like, you know, we've got a paid Fire Department, we've got a Police Chief, we've got a Highway Director, you know, all those positions. It's going to take some time from that, from them to do that. The first time they do it, it's going to be harder than, you know, the first year is always a big lift because you have to put on your crystal ball and say, how far out are we going to plan? And then, once you do it your first year, it becomes, you know, it's just, it's just an update to say, yeah, we did this, we're going to do this.
Also, just the inventory of everything that exists.
Exactly.
And some departments have that. I'm not saying, I mean, a lot of departments have it, whether it's, you know, format, make them put it in this format or whatever. I mean, as long as it's usable and we can provide assistance with that too. I mean, the other thing I would add is that in the budget for this year, right, I think it's still in there, there's money for consultant to help with this. My thought would be, maybe we could, maybe we need somebody to help with some data collection. I don't know. But probably more, you know, in that analysis and the timeline and determining funding sources, you know, kind of the building, that building the spreadsheet might be better use of taking all that stuff and kind of figuring it out. Because I think it will, the more things we consider capital items, the bigger the spreadsheet, right? When you bring in roads and bridges and culverts, that's going to be a lot, you know, beyond just the vehicles and, you know, computers or whatever. So that's part of why, and maybe, you know, first year, it's just these items and the next year we bring in some others. And what, what information do we have that can kind of come in under all of this? So again, I think the next step is really, I don't know if you want to commit to it tonight or maybe, I know, I think Phil, you had suggested interest in this and we can have a conversation with you to kind of think through maybe some key people in the, you know, from the Budget Committee and others and talk to Kathy and Ann. I hadn't had a chance, and Ann's been out for a few days, to ask the Finance Director about what, how to make, how this will work for her too. And...
Right.
So maybe we can have a meeting to kind of figure that out and come up with some, reach out to people.
I know that she's very supportive of this project. It's something she wants to see us do.
What's the path forward, I guess, to, given that we already have one step done?
Well, you were sort of voluntold last time. You could lead this effort as the Planning Board Representative. I mean, I think it's going to be, is it going to be the Planning Board leading this or is this going to be a group that's convened and maybe a little more led by staff?
I think, given the charge, that it should be, you know, that article that says it's a Planning Board responsibility. So I would be more comfortable with having somebody from the Planning Board really be the chair, you know, and we can help certainly guide that the best as possible, but kind of take the lead on it and, you know, officially share the meetings or whatever. And probably need to meet, and it's every two weeks or, you know.
And I would suspect that the meetings probably, probably should be during the day if most of the people on the committee are employees. So that becomes, you know, a scheduling challenge for whoever's going to chair, chair as well.
Who's got the bandwidth for that?
I might, but my job situation may be changing too. So I can probably make it happen now.
Well, with Zoma, I don't think that we would have to think about if that would call, you know.
True. Yeah, that could be revoked.
I mean, there's other ways of kind of coming together too, I think, so.
I would, I would actually like to make a motion that, and we can discuss this further, but I would like to authorize a CIP committee as a subcommittee of the Planning Board that would be responsible for the drafting of a CIP. And then the Planning Board would ultimately need, it would need to come back to the Planning Board for approval before it would go to the Selectmen and Budget Committee for, for their use.
Okay. So you're, the motion, the motion is to...
Create a CIP.
Create a subcommittee to develop a CIP that will then come back to the Planning Board.
Yes.
For approval.
Second.
We can kind of further decide who's going to be on it.
Right. Do we want to clarify that it will be chaired by a Planning Board member? Does that help? Does that work?
Sure.
Does that work for you, Susan, as well, for your second?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I'm just curious, June, is my experience for these type of things, you're talking capital improvement, you're talking deferred maintenance, you, this is everything? Because it sounds like you said like improvements to the town hall and it could be tearing up the carpet. I mean, how much detail are you talking, these things to get into? Or does the budget currently have $500,000 set aside every year for deferred maintenance type minor stuff? You showed major purchases, but is it that, you have to get into that much detail?
Again, I think one of the first steps is to define what should be included. So, and that could be...
And that can be the committee.
Yeah, that would be up to the committee. And I think it could be, you know, it might start off as a threshold of 50,000 and then go to five and two, you know, sorry, you can always add to it, you know.
It should also be a non, so one of the things that I recall is that it should be a non-recurring cost too. So like, and, and, you know, we, we might say $10,000.
It has a lifespan, and it has a lifespan of 10 years or something, you know.
Or five years.
Yeah, whatever.
One of those had a $25,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand. So I think it's up to...
So it's a combination of cost and lifespan of the item? So that kind of, how do you fit, you know, when are you going, and you hopefully in the inventory, you're going to have things that we don't need to replace this for 20 years. So we don't put it on that spreadsheet because that spreadsheet's only for the next six. But you kind of have that.
Or do we want to look farther than six?
Or you can go to 26 years. So that's the kind of...
When does the master plan wrap?
It's a 10 year, isn't it?
Yeah, it's 10 years. So we have eight years.
There's actually no statutory requirement to update your master plan at any, everybody always says...
No, but I thought there was a, wasn't there, I thought there was a date on that one.
2018 is the...
I thought there was a recommendation.
Yes.
And the recommendation in it was 10 years?
Yeah, I think the understanding is that it's 10 years.
Okay, 10 years, yeah.
Yeah. So a CIP that gets us at least through the end of the master plan probably makes sense?
But, but I mean, a CIP basically becomes something that's updated every year. So it's, it's basically a revolving document. Like, once you set it, like, you might look forward 10 years.
Because you're going to look out, you're going to keep refreshing it.
This year, we're looking at 2020, let's say it's 10 years, we're going to go 22 to 32. Next year, we're going to go 23 to 33. The year after is going to be 24 to 34. So, you know, as things fall off, you might add things that you're forecasting out. Or you might, you might re-prioritize and say, something that, you know, you know, our, our grader is falling apart and we had forecast to replace it in 2028, but we need, think we're going to need to do it in 2025.
Yeah.
So we're moving that up. So that might be something you do the next year. But, you know, we can, you can say, oh, but our plow truck, we have three plow trucks and we think we can push each one out a year. You know, it's kind of up to the departments to, to do that. But it becomes, you know, it's, it's, it's meant to be a tool.
Yeah. I think, I think that's sort of maybe something good that's up to the committee is really, is, I mean, it says at least six years in the charge from the, from 1987. So, and then also, yeah, what, it seems like starting broad and then if there's a move to get more specific, or by more specific, I mean, smaller things.
More, yeah, more granular.
Yes, thank you.
I was just going to show you, switch my screens here. So I just Googled, I guess this was Exeter. So this, I think, goes to what you're saying, is they've had their plan, they are starting, it looks like in 2011 to 16, you know, they keep updating it every, you know, one year chops off and you add another year at the end. So if you really want to look at each one, I picked a hundred megabyte one.
Well, that's a big one.
Yeah, they've, they've managed to make the file size a little smaller in recent years.
They must have made great progress on capital improvements. So they might, you know, ideally, that's, that idea of it being a living document, you kind of keep adding a year as, as each year goes by. So.
We did vote on the motion, right?
I'm not sure we, did we?
No.
Oh, wait a second.
All right. So we have a motion on the table. Further, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of starting a CIP committee to be chaired by a Planning Board member to present a capital improvements program to the Planning Board, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? That is great. So Phil, are you willing to at least start the initial?
I am.
Charge?
Unless somebody else wants to. I don't want to, Mike.
If this is a ongoing thing, I think having two Planning Board members ultimately was staggered.
Yep.
End dates, or end of term dates, just to make sure that we've got, I guess, I could call it sourdough, but, you know, just that we...
I, I will certainly be willing to take the lead on organizing and, and will be happy to work with planning staff to make sure that we identify the right team members. And maybe, June, I don't know if you're willing to reach out to some team members and see if they'd be willing to participate in this.
So I was getting the next thing up. So you're going to be Chair? Is that what we said?
I am willing to, yeah.
Willing to be, okay. Why don't we maybe have a conversation just to keep the meeting, you want to just talk?
Sure.
Next week or something and you can have a short meeting to try to figure out if other members want to participate, then that would be great, I think.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil, for taking this on. We can, you've got a good, not, not trying to smoke anywhere, but...
We can, you know, then, then kind of identify some key people and then reach out to them and sort of maybe talk with Ann and Kathy and how we see this working and...
We'll need to come up with a timeline.
Yeah. And then, you know, we might identify somebody that's just not available at a time when everybody, you know, kind of pick a day and time of regular meetings or something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay. All right. We'll skip 7AA since we already did it. And housing, new initiatives and discussion?
Oh, wait, we got the other A.
Oh, the stormwater asset management. Oh, that's, sorry, I guess I was thinking that was the same.
More than what we talked about earlier?
Yeah, it is different. That's totally different. Yeah.
It's different. Sorry.
Oh, interesting.
That relates to capital.
I saw, I saw stormwater and I was like, we already did that.
We'll go through this pretty quickly.
7AA, please.
So actually, at the Select Board meeting on Monday night, Joseph and I were there. We gave an update to the Select Board. So I wanted to share that. So, and this does relate to capital improvement programs and management of, because stormwater systems can be an asset and a capital, you know, capital item really, if you think of it in the, in all the pipes and drainage system. So New Hampshire Department Environmental Services has an asset management program for, for water systems, wastewater and storm water. Really, the asset management is similar to capital improvement. It's about trying to basically kind of think what the assets are and develop a level of service, it's called, for that asset and an optimum lifecycle cost and acceptable level of risk to try to put all those pieces together to come up with long-term stability of those public assets. So how do you, you know, again, the goal is to reduce risk and address infrastructure challenges, which we certainly have had, and address any aging, undersized or even oversized infrastructure. It tries to address what we want to replace first, similar to what we just talked about. How much money do we need? How do we pay for it over time? What's the operation and maintenance costs? But there, that risk and level of service part is kind of a little bit different sort of analysis and the nature of those types of assets. So that's a big piece of it. And just how, how to manage all of this. And, you know, really now putting it in, what traditionally has happened is you have a lot of local knowledge from people driving around and maintaining, you know, that's their job to all these different utilities. But over time, you know, digitizing it, having it in a format that's readily update, easily to up, more easy to update when repairs happen and replacements, and to think about the future too. Part of, I think, asset management's coming around because the life, the lifespan of a lot of utility may be 70 years, 100 years. And when you think about when some of the stuff was put in, new sewer lines, you know, they're, they may be reaching the end of their useful life or something. So they're such long-term, big things. So what has happened is, and Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District has been working quite a bit on their asset management program and have kind of developed a really good, I guess they've been, Department Environmental Services has been very pleased and kind of uses water and sewer as a model in some cases. So we were encouraged to apply to DES for stormwater asset management funding. It has traditionally been a loan program where, where you get the loan forgive, loan forgiveness. So it would be very low cost. There's a maximum of a $30,000 application for this, for any community. So the town, you first put in a pre-application, which was done, and we got approval of the pre-application this fall and November. We've met with DES in December. And what's happened is DES is using ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. They're turning this year, rather than doing loans, they're trying to fast-track some and use ARPA funds to create grants. So it's a little bit simpler process, sort of. But it's fast-tracking it because they have to commit the ARPA fund soon. So by March 31st, we were informed that we were, you know, because of the pre-application, they're bumping it up the timeline and they want an application by March 31st. So we've been working on, the first step was really trying to hire a consulting engineer to work on it because it's something that's technical and needs that level of review really. And they can, you know, so we've looked around at, went through a long qualifications-based selection process following the federal guidelines. And so on Monday evening, we recommended to the Select Board that the town work with a company called DPC Engineering, who has done this kind of work for stormwater in particular. And they're based out in Massachusetts. But, you know, they, they, they did a nice job in the interview. Anyway, so we are meeting on, starting on Monday with them to, and so the, the Select Board agreed to that and to proceed ahead with the grant application and a contract with this company. So we're going to, between now and March 31st, we've got a lot... So we're going to, between now and March 31st, we've got a lot to do to get all that together and get it into DES. I think then after that will be a little bit of a, not much will happen until the summer, when, probably after July 1st, when the project really gets going. But I do think it's kind of nicely mirrors this capital improvement program and will help, you know, it's, and how we bring that part into a capital improvement program might be another couple of years out, but it gives us a lot more information and on how to plan for that kind of infrastructure, the stormwater side. So we've got a lot to do to bits and pieces with working with Joe from Highway to gather up, what do we know about the system, you know? And then there may be some field, additional field testing done at some point by this company. They have quite a bit of field equipment. They can basically come into town with a couple of vans and give us sonar images of catch basins or something, whatever that really means.
Just out of curiosity, would it make sense to see if Plymouth Village Water and Sewer has assets to do? Like, would it make sense to have the same company do all three sets of information at once while they're in town?
That would have been ideal, but the company that they've been working with is not available. They just are too.
So they already have someone else doing this?
Yep. They have someone, a different engineering company. They're kind of wrapping up. Ideally, it would have been nice to integrate with them, but that company was not. I called them, talked to them, said, please submit, you know, they just, they are, some of these firms are getting really busy because of additional infrastructure money that's been made available. So they did not feel that they could do a quality job for the town. So they did not, but this other company seems pretty, you know, we were.
I was thinking that they hadn't done it yet, but if, I didn't realize they'd already started with someone else.
And Jason Randall from Water and Sewer is going to meet with us, with DPC on Monday to help see, you know, show, show what they've done. And one of the big things is making sure any data we, you know, trying to use the same nomenclature of data fields and that kind of stuff. But, and the town's done a culvert assessment, so, you know, but we're not quite sure what the level of information in that. You know, do you get more detail in a small amount of town or do you go for less detail of town wide, you know? There's going to be a lot of decision points for the community and we are supposed to have public input from that. And so there's a, DES requires some public meetings and things. So because, again, it's sort of a ties to the capital improvement, we're kind of taking somewhat of the lead on it, working with Joe from Highway, at least get organized and set up on this. So I think this will also be a good venue to get some of that public input in select board meetings and share the information because it's, eventually could find its way into the master plan, too. So it's, so that was kind of an update of, I haven't had a chance to talk about it much because this all sort of unfolded fairly quickly since really early December and everything else.
I commend you on your work for that.
Pardon?
I commend you on putting that together. It's, sounds like a great, a great asset, well, a great resource for the.
Well, it's kind of putting it into a GIS system and that kind of stuff, too. So, so that people in the field could, you know, see, I'm not paying attention to the.
I know, it was maybe 10 or 12, 12 or 15 years ago, the co-op did that with all of their resources, where they, like, every pole, every transformer, they have a GPS tag. Like, they paid somebody to go out and locate every, and identify every single resource in their network. And now, like, it makes it a lot easier if you have to go work on something. You have, you get a work order with a tag and it's, you can, your, your iPad will take you to that resource without, you know. It just becomes a lot more useful for people who have to work on things and.
Having the two separate, you know, water and sewer being separate from town, having platforms that they can also share information, you know, so if there is going to be some repairs to one utility versus the other, you can kind of hopefully, or hey, we got to open up the street to fix this. Oh, we see that your catch basin is old and maybe not in great shape. Would you want to do this now while it's there? You know, that, that's another goal of it, too, to kind of have that information, so.
Just out of curiosity, does Plymouth have street opening standards for how to repair pavement?
I believe, we have an excavation permit and so Joe would manage it by highway, so yes. And I think, believe you have to post a bond and.
Okay. That was something that was, the City of Concord was really specific about how you had to make cuts in the roadway and, like, your top coat had to be cut back six inches past your base coat and they all had to be diagonal and not, not perpendicular to direction of travel. It was actually a really informative, and, you know, I think because of that, it was, there, you know, the repairs that were made to city streets tended to last a lot longer.
Yep.
All right. Anything else on the stormwater asset management program? Housing, new initiatives and discussion?
So I'm turning this over to Joseph, who put all this together.
Great.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, so we thought we would put together something just to give a little bit of an update because, of course, housing, as ever, is a, is a hot issue, a lot of buzz. Also, there's a lot of, you know, webinars, discussions that are being put out on, you know, in the Office of Strategic Initiatives and others. There's also a lot of legislative interest in housing right now, just because of, you know, where we are in the legislative cycle. So I just thought I would give a little bit of an update on that and put together some information from these, you know, various presentations and webinars that we've seen. So, you know, even prior to March of 2020, New Hampshire had a shortfall of between 20 and 30,000 housing units. You know, there was a goal established at that point to create about 4,500 new units a year by 2024. But, you know, after March 2020, there's really not been an indication that there's been, you know, that that shortfall has narrowed any. So if you look at the supply of inventory, it's, you know, continued to dwindle. You know, it fell 29%. Listing prices, as, you know, I'm sure many of you have seen these, these statistics out there. It's, you know, average listing price is up 13%. This is between November of 2021 and, or, I'm sorry, November of 2020 and November of 2021. Or, yeah, those, those percentages I'm giving, that is. So where the home buyers coming from, there's been a slight increase in out-of-state home buyers over that, you know, over this period. It hasn't been an incredibly large increase, but buyers from Massachusetts, that's up 4.4%. Other buyers from, you know, out-of-state are up 2.8% versus November of 2020. And so this is all from, you know, the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. So as I mentioned, you know, before, pre-pandemic, there was the estimate of 20 to 30,000 unit shortfall. Right now, you know, there's, there's obviously been some changes in things since then. So Lakes Region Planning Commission, as well as the state, are doing a regional housing needs assessment. All RPCs in the state are conducting these. So, you know, the hope would be that this would give us a better picture of, you know, what's changed since that, you know, March 2020. So there's this survey and I think this was sent out by L-Link to everyone. So, you know, that's just something that we, you know, will be coordinating with LRPC on, I'm sure, going forward. You know, there's also been a lot of discussion from employers. So there's this webinar conducted by New Hampshire Business Review. I'm not sure if any other, you know, may have been able to attend that. But generally, you know, it was an opportunity for the Business and Industry Association and representatives from New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority to hold somewhat of a roundtable talking about, you know, sort of their perspective on the issue. And essentially, you know, the pitch of the meeting was, you know, business owners have been struggling with the increased housing price, decreased housing supply in terms of, you know, attracting and retaining employees. You know, unemployment in New Hampshire is, is quite low. And if you look, you know, since, at the unemployment claims filed since 2020, it's down, I believe, 90, 99%. So it's, you know, there, there's definitely, and if you can hear anecdotally from many business owners that there are, you know, often these challenges with, you know, employers trying to recruit but not, you know, having their employees not be able to find a place to live. So of course, this has generated a lot of discussion. The legislature has, has taken a lot of interest in this. It's become pretty high-profile. So, you know, even one of the headline issues from the governor's State of the State address was this new housing fund, which in everyone's packet, there's this Invest NH Housing Incentive Fund, which was announced, you know, by the governor. It's one of many proposals. So, you know, that's Senate Bill 400 is, is what this actually is. But it creates a number of grants and incentives. Couple of other, you know, key bills that have been proposed. There's House Bill 1177, which has been generating a little bit of a stir, you know, lately. It just got voted recommended by committee and that would be to allow up to four units on single-family lots where adequate water and sewer exists with, you know, a variety of configurations. And this was actually recommended for approval by the County and Municipal Government Committee. And there is a fact sheet out about that one. Another, another somewhat similar bill, House Bill 1087, was voted down in committee, but that would have established the, the maximum minimum lot size as 10,000 square foot anywhere that there's, you know, water and sewer capacity. There's also Senate Bill 329, which would create essentially just a commission to study barriers to housing development, especially middle-income and workforce housing, you know, make recommendations in the future. One of the big ones, though, that people are keeping an eye on, since it's, you know, got a lot of high-profile support, is this Housing Incentive Fund. And it's, you know, got some things that are of note to municipalities in terms of funding available. There's a couple of, you know, there's, there's a lot of pieces to it and there's not, you know, not a ton of specifics being, you know, discussed right now, but this handout was pretty, pretty informative. There are grants for planning and zoning in terms of updating development regulations, zoning ordinances, site plan, subdivision. Also, these municipal impact funding grants, which sort of, the goal being to incentivize multifamily development to be approved within six months of initial application. Then it, you know, there's the idea that if that happens, the town gets some bonus grant per unit that they approve within six months. But, you know, as I mentioned, there's a number of bills, but those are just some of the high-profile ones that have been discussed lately and, you know, could, could list probably, you know, half dozen more that, that are also. But, you know, the prospect of, you know, with House Bill 1177, that's the four-unit of housing bill being recommended for approval by the committee and this Invest NH Housing Incentive Fund, you know, sort of receiving that, you know, marquee place in the State of the State address. These are, you know, some certainly just that we want to keep our eyes on and are just, you know, wanted to bring to the attention of the board if, you know, we see them in the media and everything like that.
So, yeah, Joseph's done a great job in keeping, just a few weeks, really tapping into all the information about this. And I think at the end of our last meeting, Matt had mentioned, because the day, it was the day, I think, the governor gave his State of the State and he mentioned this fund. So this handout is what so far has come, you've all got a copy of it. We just wanted to share it. It's really light on details and so that's all we know thus so far. But I do think this municipal impact funding grant, basically trying, I can't imagine how this is going to work. You know, if we can get a project permitted in six months, we get, get a bonus. Like, I actually think that's very doable for Plymouth, you know, I don't, but I also think from the planning board side, it all depends on how good the application is. You know, if you've got it well-engineered and there's minimal mistakes, details missing. So to blame the town as where the holdup is could be in some cases, but I'm not worried about that for Plymouth. Take, this board hasn't taken too long, you know? And you could also get the money and just have a string of conditions that's like, you know, 20 pages long, just to get the money, right? So I don't know what that, how that, you know, if you, if you in one night gave a conditional approval with 20 pages of conditions, do you get an extra bonus? Versus like, taking three more months and getting a shorter list of conditions straightened out. I don't know.
Are you up to date on Senate Bill, I think it's 249, that addresses short-term rental housing?
We had talked about that. I don't, I think that one has passed the Senate, I think. I can't remember, but.
I think it's potentially moving forward and it has the potential to affect, to limit the town's ability to restrict short-term rentals in single-family residential zones. So it, it's going to happen like towns can't prohibit accessory dwelling units. It's going to mean that towns can't prohibit short-term rentals in single family, they can regulate them, but they can't prohibit them.
In a similar vein, the, the case in Conway was decided in the last couple of weeks now, I think?
Yeah, the Conway lost, but they are, I heard was going to appeal to the Supreme Court, State Supreme Court.
So, I mean, in my opinion, I think short-term rentals are another issue that is going to decrease housing availability in reality because, I mean, you know, out-of-state investors buy properties for significantly more than local families can afford and you can get, you can make the economics work with short-term rentals, which means that, you know, affordable housing is now, I mean, I mean, somebody just bought a brand-new house, 800,000, in Campton and they're, they're exclusive, they're planning to exclusively do short-term rentals out of it. Cover the mortgage, like, no, no issues. So it's, there's a lot of money in that market.
In a speculative vein, there's been a lot of chatter and I'm not sure how much, like, reality is behind it.
Yeah.
With the expansion of broadband, there's been a lot of talk about remote workers, kind of.
Additional pressure.
Yeah.
Yeah, additional pressure by people that are currently in more metro areas being able to work remotely.
Exactly.
That and the push to remote work over the past couple of years has just made that a possibility.
But now we're understanding the broadband as well, to more remote communities.
People to live and work in more remote areas that are not currently suitable. So, yeah, I mean, I think we're going to continue to see housing pressure. I mean, my only hope is that builders, you know, see the demand and are able to, you know, market forces react and people start building, you know, builders are be able to start investing in new construction more. But, you know, there's, there's still, it's still not cheap to build new, you know?
Well, I do think there's a little bit of tension between if you can't prohibit short-term rentals.
Right.
So, but if, say this one passes where every lot can have up to four units, if you have water and sewer. So you could buy a building, chop it up into four units and rent them all out for short-term rentals. Not, that's not going to help solve the, that's not making housing that people can live in, you know?
In fact, it's usually competing with the people who are.
It's exactly, yeah. Or even if one goes to a short-term, you know, instead of getting four, you may only get two or three. Who knows?
It's a real challenge.
Yeah. So there's lots of, lots of changes, lots of moving parts with it. So, anyway, we just wanted, we've talked a lot about housing. We've, if anybody's on PlanLink, there was a whole lot of chatter the last couple of days about.
A whole lot.
I forgot, I used to wa, I used to get that. I don't get it anymore.
I'm really about this, this four-units things, but also this maximum, the maximum minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. That's been defeated, right?
Yeah, not recommended.
Not recommended, sorry. But that's a really different, I mean, an acre is 46,000.
It's a quarter acre.
It's a quarter of an acre.
Yeah.
So if you think about if that, if that was, if the state mandated, we can't have, if all of a sudden our zoning in our single-family zone, or where we have water and sewer, say, goes to quarter acre, you know?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to accept quarter acre lots.
So, again.
If they're not addressing frontage, though, you could still have like 100 feet of frontage required.
Yeah, so that's where, you know, setbacks, frontage, parking requirements, like, how, you know, how would this all work? Who knows? It's sometimes these, but the idea is that there's these bills, we want you to be aware that there are these bills being tossed out there, you know, going through the legislature and that may.
They're trying.
The one-size-fits-all isn't just going to work on, you know, in my opinion, but there's definitely.
They've started to pass in other states.
Pardon?
They've started to pass in other states.
Yeah. Or in, sometimes in, like, Minneapolis, there's no single-family zone anymore, you know, they, but that's in it more in a city, you know, not in the whole state, I think. So, who knows? But it does remind, we did talk a lot about in density and increasing density and we were going to take a walk around. So I think it would still be worth, you know, maybe trying to schedule that for May work session with that.
Can we, can we pull an extract from our tax list to see just of the tax maps that are on file? Like, how many lots do we have that are under an acre? Like, I'd like to see just like a, a distribution of lot, of existing lot sizes throughout the town, just to see how many. Because I bet we have a bunch of lots that are, you know, that were approved for under an acre.
There are a whole lot of lots of single-family residential that are under the half-acre.
Right. My lot's 0.19.
Wow. Well, and that makes, there's, there's a good case for, you know, that, you know.
And it works.
Yours, yours is less than 10,000 square feet? Yours, yours is less than 10,000 square feet, but...
Yeah, and I don't think adheres, adheres to any of the setbacks.
No.
Yeah, so maybe that's another area, if we wanted, you know, could you go, could we go slow, smaller in some areas and look at setbacks and just that follows what has actually been built? So I do think that analysis is important, but also looking at the downtown area, um, was what, kind of where we ended up of, like, taking a walk around, thinking about what, you know, should we be at?
I think there are other issues there, too. Like, I think when you get to really small lots with small setbacks, like, your, your fire separation between buildings can be small, so that's where, like, it's really important to have sprinklers in those homes if they're going to be really close. But, but, you know, I think, I think the, I forget if the new building code, I think New Hampshire exempted sprinklers from new construction still, but...
And single-family, I think, but anyway.
It might be one of those things where, you know, we might, we, as a town, we might want to consider requiring sprinklers if you're going to have setback, reduce setbacks on a small lot.
Again, lots to consider, but I was thinking of if we aim to schedule that downtown walk, hopefully the weather will be nice in this, the first...
The May work session?
The May work session, because if we are on Main Street, starting in June, July, we could be running into lots of construction, so...
Yeah, let's, let's put that in the, in the books then, I think that's...
Um, and I think maybe aim for May, if it was totally rain, we might be able to squeeze it in in June, and then, does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Is there a, so you said, Joseph, in your report, that the shortage is 20 to 30,000 houses?
Yep, that was predicted March 2020 was when that...
And, um, but, you know, not that New Hampshire is huge, but New Hampshire's a big place, right? Is it broken down anymore, like, by county, by town, by, I wonder if, like, I mean, it would help me think about this more if there was like, okay, Plymouth is 100 housing units short, right? That's our part. I have no idea what that number actually is, because it was interesting, I think, when we had the landlords that came in, I think there was three or four of them that one time, they actually said that the vacancy rate here was quite low, or...
Higher.
Anyway, higher than, higher than, uh...
For the off-campus student rentals, but...
Right, right, so I'm just curious, like...
Even there, we're looking at, like, different housing stocks, which might not easily flip one way or in another, and it's not necessarily like apples to apples.
No, I know, but I guess 30, we're not going to find 30,000 houses in Plymouth, so what, what would, is there a way to, like, think about what would an ideal number be for the town? Um, it may hap, you know, make, it would make the mountain that much shorter to climb to get there, and I think maybe a more reasonable thing for us to obtain in a way to help achieve that, I don't know.
Yeah, that, I think that a big part of that will come with the Lakes Region Planning Commission's Regional Housing Needs Assessment, but there is pretty good data that has been put out recently about, uh, building permit activity by county, and it breaks it down pretty specifically, um, you know, 49% of new housing units were in Rockingham and Hillsborough County in this, you know, in this time period, so, you know, most of the construct, there's really pretty good data for where the construction activity is the most active. As far as the needs, that assessment, I don't believe was broken down as specifically, but I, I do believe since this is being done on the Regional Planning Commission level, we will be getting some of that data, so, so that would be my hope, that we get, get that information, because I, I think that makes a lot of sense, having it, you know, what's our share of that.
I think we need to be careful, too, um, because some people do invest in these houses, like the $800,000 house, for that particular purpose, to pay for it, so they've got someplace to retire to. And I think there's a lot of people that do buy smaller places or build smaller places for that purpose, for that same reason, so I think we need to be careful not to chase them off as well. They're putting a structure in the building...
That $800,000 house brings us property taxes, right?
Well, that's just it, it does bring people to the area.
And it doesn't put anybody in the school, and so, in some ways, that's real nice.
I think we need to be really careful how we approach this.
Yep.
It's not all about people coming here to work, to, to live, or whatever, because that, I mean, it just isn't, doesn't work that way all the time.
I know. It's got to be both.
There's a lot of unknowns about it, I think, is, you know, and every community has its, I mean, certainly we have a different situation because of the student rentals and then other surroundings, you know, similar communities may have, whereas, who knows? I think it's, you know, I have been thinking about digging into some of the tax assessment data, you know, how many multifamily units do we have? You know, we don't even know, so, how many building permits, how many new houses are being built? I think Scott said there's 14 new houses under construction right now in town.
I'm curious if, uh...
For Plymouth.
If we, uh, if we currently meet our requirement for a number of affordable houses, so the, the workforce housing development has requirements that if you, if, if a community doesn't have a certain percentage of homes that are affordable, meaning meeting by, you know, uh, the, you know, affordable to the area median, median income for the, the area, um, and, and it's defined by, you know, if the, if the area median income, uh, you take 30% of that to go to your housing, if you can't buy a house with that, you don't, that's not an affordable house. So like, you can take our AMI, take a percentage of it and say, all right, we're going to apply this to housing costs and say, you know, what percentage of the homes that are in our current area meet the definition of affordability? You know, the, the workforce housing requirement, if someone were to bring us an application that wanted increased density, we would have to consider that, but we might already have enough housing that meets the definition of affordable in workforce housing that we wouldn't have to consider that, but in my mind, I think we would still want to consider, if someone were to bring us a proposal that asked for increased density because they're building workforce housing, I think it would be silly not to grant them that, honestly.
Again, the, the regional housing needs assessment should help with that, as well as the state just hired a, um, as, as a consultant, finishing up a report on statewide, how, how many communities, you know, that, what's the effectiveness of that law, and I think it's pretty minimal.
And I think the other, the other challenge is that housing prices, even in the past year, housing prices have gone up substantially, so like, what number do you use for housing prices? Do you use, you know, the assessed value, or do you use the more recent market average for sale price per square foot? That's, that's a tough one.
Anyway, well, enough...
I was just kind of curious, I mean, I'm looking at this, like, demolition grants, and I'm wondering how flexible it is? And I'm thinking in Plymouth, especially as more students move out of some of those rentals, some of the most beautiful housing stock in the town are student rentals, which are really hard to renovate at this point, given what's happened to many of them. And, like, does gutting count for, like, a refresh of some of those houses to incentivize redeveloping some of those houses back into single-family houses?
Yep. Yeah, that may be, but I don't, I can, I know of some other communities that have a lot bigger problems with, you know, low-quality stock of three-unit, you know, three-story building, you know, that, that's probably geared more into that, who knows? Or wiping out a whole area...
I can see what it's geared towards, I'm just wondering how flexible it is to do something creative and different with it.
I mean, or some, some communities torn down, underutilized or decaying shopping strip malls and then convert them to housing, so whether it means that, who knows? Again, it doesn't show there.
A few years ago, efficiency Vermont was giving people incentives to crush mobile homes. Crush them, put them in a dumpster, get them out of the housing stock, like, you can't make them, like, the pre-HUD, or like, the pre-60s versions, you can't make them energy-efficient. And their, their solution was rather than putting money into, like, Band-Aids on these old homes, get rid of them. Like, put enough housing, put enough pressure in the housing market that the people who are living there are going to go find a rental. They might be in an apartment, but it's better than a mobile home.
I was just saying, we've got beautiful old homes, though.
Yeah.
That need, or, which is the flip side of this, that, like, could just get torn down because they're too hard to deal with.
Yeah.
Well, and the other part is just these planning and zoning grants that, again, who knows how that's going to work out, but it's incentives to help us work on the regulation side, so, um, as much as we can get, you know, say that we've been looking at these things and we want to do this with our regulations would be helpful when they get that grant program together, so, anyway, that's the update.
Okay, um, membership of planning board members. Looks like we just have one, aside from our select board representative and alternate. These terms go up every year. It's just Mike Ahern's term that is up, so, um, this year, and that's just because of how, how the terms expire, so...
And the vacant term.
Oh, the vacant term is expired, yeah.
So, how does this work? I've never actually served on a planning board where members are appointed. Do we just go to this, uh, request, uh, appointment to the selectman?
So we were, we were, can I, you want me to, sorry, didn't mean to...
Yeah.
Yeah, we have two terms, and Steve Whitman has indicated he wanted to leave the planning board, he's just too busy, hasn't obviously been able to make some meetings in some time, so, um, he, and his term ends in April, so we would have an opening there. Traditionally, what I think has happened is that somebody that's been an alternate kind of is a training program to become a full, full-fledged planning board member, so, um, we have, well, I'm assuming, I, you know, Mike isn't here tonight, but we can ask him, assuming he wants to be reappointed, would one of the alternate members want to become a full voting member to fill that vacancy? Was where, where I was headed with it, and then we'll reappoint anybody else that needs to be, like Mike, so...
I think, I mean, it's really up to the, the alternate, so...
Put you on the spot, or you can think about it and let me know.
But your terms are still, you still have terms as alternate members if you want to wait those out, too, that, you know?
I would like to commend the, the alternates that are here, you've both been very diligent about being here for mem, for meetings, like, I, I would encourage either of you to run as members if, if you were so inclined.
And procedurally, is there, like, let's say they both want to do this, is there a preference for seniority, or does whoever...
Can you fog them here?
I thought it was a lot easier when planning board members were elected, honestly, because then the voters pick.
Unfortunately, I think they both joined the board a year ago in February, so the senior already does it. You're going to have to flip a coin.
Our bylaws, I think, are, the, the requirements are the same whether, for attendance, whether you're an alternate or a, a full member, so I think the idea is alternates sit in and get the lay of the land, so, I mean, you don't have to state it on the record this evening, you can think about it, and we can, um, I mean, you can both submit your letters, because they would have to write letters again to the select board, right? And, um, just the same way you got appointed the first time, so, and we could just be surprised next. Next meeting, too.
They might appoint both of you and not Mike.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe you have a conversation with each of them after, you know, during their time?
We can do that, too, yeah.
As chair.
Yes, I will check in with both of you in the next week.
You could ask me to leave.
So you're, you're seated through 2023?
I'd do something egregious.
That is, yeah.
Not life-lens, the, the board does have, we can boot members for missing two meetings unexcused, right?
No, it's, um, it's, it's, I think it's three consecutive meetings...
Without excuse.
Without excuse, and, or five meetings throughout the year, I believe is what the bylaws say.
Yeah, there's, it's actually pretty rigorous in terms of requiring people to be here.
Yes, I mean, three consecutive meetings is, that's kind of a lot, unexcused, it's all unexcused, so, you just don't show up for a month and a half, so...
It's kind of a lot of information that you miss, too.
Yeah, yeah, so...
I, I think Steve's there already.
Well, Steve has sort of given a blanket excuse, and we've said he would come if he could, but he hasn't been able to, so...
I thought he said he was, yeah, okay, either way.
All right. So, and then we have, we'll do the officer elections at our next meeting as well, because it's the first meeting after the town meeting. And a reminder, our stuff shows up on the, um, our stuff being the zoning amendments show up on the ballot.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday, exactly, not at town meeting, um, so, I was confused by that on my first, my first year on the planning board, and missed a vote that tied.
Really?
Yeah. So, anyway, um, all right, possible dates for joint meeting with the ZBA.
So the ZBA had a fairly lengthy meeting two nights ago, it's been a long week, and, so we talked to them, I don't know if they'll have any applications for their April meeting, but the zoning board meeting and the planning board meeting are on the same week, so what I suggested, um, if this board could meet on Tuesday at their meeting time on that week, which would be April... First Tuesday of the month, it would be of...
The 5th?
The April 5th.
What time?
So instead of meeting Tuesday the 7th, we would move this meeting to the 5th?
Tuesday the 7th, we'd meet Tuesday the 5th.
Does that work for people? And they usually meet at 7 o'clock, and we meet at, this board meets at 6:30, so maybe they could do 6:30? I don't know, well, time to be determined, 6:30 or 7?
Yeah, I think, um, logistics-wise, are we going to their meeting, or is, so, or do we both have to open a meeting because we have a certain number of mi, members of both boards, so we're...
Yeah, there's some way of having one of you gets designated as chair, we'll have to look at the bylaw, there is some provision for that.
It has to be noticed that we're both meeting, though.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
We have a quorum of both, both groups. And I, I forget how minutes work, do we keep minutes, like, minutes, but they get posted for both, the ZBA and the planning board?
I am free on the 5th.
Is that, okay, is it, we'll aim for that and see, and if they end up getting of, you know, two applications, we probably would push it off a month, or, you know, something like that, or see if they, we'll figure it out, but we'll aim for that, okay? To be determined. The, what, related to this wasn't specifically on the agenda, but we were actually talking, because the select board meets at 5, this board's meets at 6:30, and the zoning board's at 7. And that's fine, but this, you know, has this board ever considered meeting, like, at 5? Does that work for people? No?
I mean, I potentially could make that happen, but it just means I have to leave work and probably half an hour to an hour early just to be able to transition, so as it is, I leave work early to get to these, so I can have dinner.
We can make it happen.
It just...
If it ma, it sounds like it would make it easier for staff.
It would make it a lot easier, I think, for staff, but that's not, you know, it's just, you're here, you kind of stay through it, and, you know, but I realize it's not about us, it's about the board, so, um, I just wanted to mention it as a possibility or see what you think.
I guess what my concern would be is it, is it going to make it more difficult for applicants?
Yeah, and what I wondered is maybe doing that on the first Thursday and keep it at 6:30 at the second, but then that gets really confusing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, see, I actually think that's not a bad, that's not a bad idea, but, yeah.
Personally, I, if we were going to move it earlier, I'd prefer 5:30 and not 5, just to give some buffer.
Or even 6.
Because it's a struggle, you know, on Mondays for select board, it's a struggle. I'm usually walking in here, like, as Bill's hitting the gavel.
Oh, really?
Yeah. How about 5:50?
The public, too, the public likes the delay.
All right, I just, um...
9:00 PM?
Second, no.
I mean, I'm up for, for changing it.
Think about it, let's, no decision on it, so...
Because I realize that you guys end up having a lot of, this is a big week for you guys.
Should we, uh, gather our resources and plan to discuss it after town meeting when we do election of officers?
Yeah, yeah, it's just an idea.
I mean, we should, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Although, are you, are you going to be gone, gone?
I might be gone the next meeting, so...
We could do it, the meeting after if you'd like. Well, it should, it should be during our first meeting in a month, during our work session, not a hearing, right? Okay. Which is actually going to be the April one with the ZBA, though, that's our next work session.
We'll figure it out at some point.
Right.
We, we can test out what it feels like to start at, at 7. Yeah, I wouldn't, I, yeah, pushing it later, I think, is a, is a no-go.
The school board meets at 6, that, that works pretty well for me, most people.
Why don't you think about it, we can, I just, um, for a variety of reasons, I think it would help, it would certainly help us, but I want to make sure it works for everybody[1765.04] it would help, it would certainly help us, but I want to make sure it works for everybody, so...
No, my biggest concern, I mean, my biggest concern is making sure that applicants and butters can get here in a reasonable amount of time. My next concern is staff, and then the rest of you folks.
So, June, you, you staff, you're at all the meetings? It's not just us?
Uh, yeah, we, we go to the zoning board, like, we...
It is a huge impact.
We were at the select, select board meeting this week, zoning board and planning board, so this, it's not, for some reason, in 2022, there's a lot of, like, the zoning board and planning board fall on the same week, so that makes it a little, but, you know, it's, it's part of the job, it just also means you get tired, so you take a little bit of time in the morning to not be here, and so then you're not getting work done during the...
I understand.
It's not, this hasn't been a highly productive work week, it's been a highly productive meeting week, so...
All right, so we're going to think about this, let's put this, let's just keep that